Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. This is the second of my ReasonPrep's live streams, where we're going to discuss SAT, ACT, SAT subject tests, in particular, Math 1, Math 2, Chemistry, and Literature. Those are my main specialties. College admissions, anything else that you might have questions about. So as you can see on the screen, to ask questions, send your questions to ask@reasonprep.com. That's the best way. Send me emails. I'm going to prioritize emailed questions over chat questions. You can ask questions in chat, but prefer questions by email. If you're going to send a specific question, like on an SAT or ACT problem that you're working on, that you've got a question on, please include the answer. Just makes the process more smooth. If you can, an image of the question, so picture, scan, whatever, screenshot. And if possible, the source of the question. So did you get it from a real test, from a Barron's Book, a Princeton Review, whatever. You could also send general questions, so questions about the SAT and ACT more broadly. But I ask for those. Try to be as specific as you can. So if I get a question like, I have a, "How do I get 300 points more on the SAT?", that's a really impossible question for me to answer with any kind of brevity or point, because that's a huge question. But if you ask something more specific than that, like, "I need help with this question type", or, "What do I do about this issue with time management?", or, the more specific and narrow you can get, generally, the questions will be better, and my answers, more importantly, will be better, and I'll be able to help you and give some other people some value there as well. So I've got some questions queued up. Let's see how we're doing. So let's fix... Wait, what's that? Is that really that dark? Oh, I see, I see. Okay, we can fix that. Okay. Alright, so let's start getting into the questions. Alright, so... Try to zoom in on this a little bit. So first question. Cool. "What is the routine to improve on the English section from 550 to 650? What is the schedule? I usually get a 30 on a reading section in college board and a 32 on writing, but on the SAT test day, I got 24 and 30. Try my best to POE. I know I should practice a little every day on reading or writing. Is that a study schedule I can hear too?" Okay, so a few questions here. I'm going to try to simplify things and keep things as simple as possible. The first thing I would say about improving on the English section, obviously, you've got reading and writing. There's two different situations for both. When you're talking about writing, the two things you have to work on are your grammar rules. So for writing, you have grammar rules, and then rhetorical skills questions. Those are the questions where you have to add, remove a sentence, change a paragraph around. And my writing course, which is available free, it's on YouTube, it's on my website, reasonprep.com, covers that completely. If you haven't already, work through that course. If you have worked through the course already, I recommend working through it again, because that's really all you need. That, do some practice tests. The errors are really repetitive, the rules are very consistent. Learn those and you're good. Reading's a lot trickier, because there's not really any rules, formulas, concepts you can learn. It's more about the skill of reading, which is something that is a skill that you build over time. It's not something that you can get one trick or one tip and it's fixed. So that's going to take a bit more consistent effort. You're going to have to work through practice tests. I have videos about this topic, in terms of how to practice reading. There's a video I have on my YouTube channel about how to, if you run out of practice tests, what to do, because you really want to use real SATs to practice the reading. You want to avoid any third-party material. In terms of a study schedule, you've already hit on some of the major points. You want to just be consistent. Be consistent. So that means if you can study, it's much better to study 20 minutes per day, six days a week, than do nothing for five days and then cram a couple hours on two days, or do four hours of studying on one day. It is much superior to do a little bit every day. So you should be studying, let's say, I don't know exactly when your next test is, but just as a baseline, you know, 30 minutes per day, five to six days per week. If you can push it to an hour per day, that would be good. But anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour per day, when you're just doing your practice sections, or you're watching my videos, or you're doing workbooks, whatever you're doing, 30 minutes to an hour per day, five to six days per week consistently, that's good. And then occasionally, I'd say, once every two weeks, a full practice test. But I highly recommend, don't just do full practice test, full practice test, full practice test, full practice test. You gotta do a lot more of little work in between. So whether that's watching my videos, doing practice sections timed, doing stuff out of books. You want to do a lot of that. So you really only should do a full practice test once every two weeks, once every three weeks, something like that. Okay. Okay, so I've got a question about, from a specific test. So this is Practice, PSAT Practice Test 2, number 28. So let me go ahead and get that test out here. Practice, so PSAT 2, Section 4, number 28. So if you haven't done this test yet, this is the second PSAT released by the College Board. If you haven't done this one, I recommend maybe not watching this, so that you don't get spoiled. But if you have, it's fine too. Or you can watch, maybe you won't remember, but whoops. Make that a little smaller. So let's work through this problem. And I think there was a question attached to this. The question was, "How do I approach arithmetic problems when the algebra is too confusing?" So let's see what's going on here. This is in the calculator section, so we can use our calculator if we want. "So a grocer carries two types of frozen meals that have the fat and carbohydrate content shown on the table above. John wants to purchase a combination of two types of meals with no more than 350 grams of fat, and that many grips of carbohydrates. John purchased 10 Szechuan chicken meals. What is the greatest number of stir-fry meals he can purchase, so that the combination will satisfy the requirements?" Okay. So yeah, you can see, this is a situation where it may feel like a two equations, two unknown type thing, but they give us so much information that I don't think we need to resort to algebra at all. I think we can just do arithmetic, which is, I think, what this question was getting to. So what I would start with is, I know I've got 10 of the Szechuan chicken meals. So let's see how many grams of fat and grams of carbohydrates that would be. Well, I know if I multiply 10 times each of these, that would be 50 grams of fat and 350 carbohydrates. Now, the max I can have would be 350 grams of fat and 2,975 carbohydrates. So let's figure out now, what's my budget, so to speak, for fat and calorie grams, fat and carbohydrate grams for the stir-fry, given that I know that's my limit. So I'm going to have, let's say, 300 here, because 300 plus 50 is 350. And then you can do this in your calculator, but you'll get 26, 25. So what do we do now? Well, what do we do now is, we want to know, what is the greatest number of stir-fry meals he can purchase? So what I would say is, okay, the stir-fry meals are four grams of fat. So let's divide 300 by four and see how many meals that would be. So I'll get my calculator out here. So 300 divided by four. Ah, go away. So that would be 75 stir-fry meals when it comes to fat. But here's the thing, you can't just put 75. Maybe the answer is 75, but we have to make sure that we don't go over budget with the carbohydrates. So what I'm going to do now is, let's check the carbohydrates. So we have a budget of 26, 25 left for that. Let's divide that by 40. And I get 65.625. So in terms of fat, I can afford 75 of these meals. But in terms of my carbohydrates, I can only afford 65. So I want the maximum number of meals I can purchase and stay in these requirements. It's not going to be 75, because that would actually push me above the carbohydrates level. So what's going to have to be is some form of 65, right? It's going to have to be that number. Now, be careful, rounding up would make sense numerically, but in terms of the real situation we're dealing with here, I'm not going to round up, because if I round up, I'm going to have too many carbohydrate calories. So my answer here is actually going to be 65. So that's the number of meals I could afford, given the budgets of the fat and carbohydrate calories that I have left. So the question was, "How do I approach arithmetic problems when the algebra is too confusing?" So this one, they're kind of two separate categories. I guess that's why I asked for a specific example. Here, we use no algebra at all, and I don't see any reason to use it. What we use instead is arithmetic. And the way you manage this is, make sure, as you can see here, you just organize your information in a graphical way. I almost like reproduced the table and then did a little bit of work here, but keep your information organized, and that's really going to help you keep track of what you're doing and how you're doing it. Okay, so let's move on to the next question. We'll do a chat question now. "So I got a 26 on the ACT. What should I do now?" Again, a little too broad of a question. There's, number one, 26, that can mean a lot of different things for English, math, reading, writing, or science, different scores. So if you want to be a bit more specific with what the breakdown was, that would help. And then even then, that's still a really huge question, because there's a lot of things potentially we could do. So what we'll do, why don't you give me the breakdown, if you'd like, of those score of that 26? And then go ahead and what I'll maybe do is, I'll pick out the lowest number of that, and I'll tell you what to do on that particular section. Because otherwise, there's like a lot of things that you can do when you're at a 26. We want to try to narrow the question a bit more. So if you want to follow up and give me more information, that would be fine. Okay. So I got a lot of questions here about the December SAT, and if this person who emailed me, I emailed you back about this, but I kind of don't want to talk about the December SAT. I think I might have done one question from it last week, and I regret it now, because technically, that test wasn't released by the College Board, and I don't want to get involved in tests that were essentially bootlegged. That could, in theory, hurt me, but really could hurt you, because the College Board has been very strict with cancelling tests and cancelling people's scores. If there's any hint of cheating, they're having a lot of problems with test security lately. So I'm not going to really touch any questions from unknown test sources, because I don't want to expose myself, or yeah, I don't want to expose myself or you to any liability. So I'm gonna take a pass on those, I think. For those of you who are watching, or going to be watching later, you don't have time to watch the whole broadcast, I do release a recording of this. I release the full recording, for what it's worth, but then what I do later is, I'm going to take this broadcast, and I'm going to edit it down into the highlights, like I did for the first one. So the most relevant questions, more importantly, when I give a good answer or an okay answer, typically put those in the highlights. So I'll boil it down into the core stuff. I'll put timestamps in the description, so you know exactly what I answer every question. That's probably the most useful way to watch the recording, but there will be a recording after. As I move on to more questions, whoops. As I go into more questions, if you'd like to send a question, you can ask it in chat, or preferably, if you send it to me by email, so ask@reasonprep.com. That's really the best way, so I can just keep the questions organized, and I can just check them off, more or less, as I work my way through them. So, alright, let's move this here. Okay, so we've got a question about ACT prep. "So what's the best book and resources for studying ACT?" Okay, so I'm going to give you the businessman's answer, and then I'll give you some other suggestions as well. Because obviously, I'm going to recommend my courses. I mean, why would I not? So I have full courses on the SAT, the ACT. I've got a free English course, that many of you watching this probably are already using. But then I have courses for math, reading, and science, and essay, in addition to essay grading, in addition to solution videos to all eight Red Book tests, in addition to another five test solutions to five other tests released by the College Board. So my ACT courses are, of course, what I recommend. I go through everything, they're comprehensive. I designed them to be the only resource you would need to prep for the ACT. So that is the biased answer. What are some other things? What about books? So I don't sell any books, what about books? So the thing with, as I've discussed elsewhere, third-party books, is you want to use them carefully. You should never use third-party books for full tests. Those scores are meaningless. Pay no attention to them. You should use their websites out there, CrackACT being the big one, where you can get previous ACT tests of dubious origin, but you can still get them and use them. Those are the best to use if you're going to do full tests. The point of third-party books is to isolate topics. So I would say, with rare exceptions, third-party books for ACT, you know, Barron's, Princeton Review, that kind of thing, not really useful at all for reading and science. A little bit more useful for English and math, because you can target particular topics. In terms of particular books I recommend, you know, none. You know, the big guys are probably fine. I typically like Princeton Review as the big one. Barron's sometimes is pretty good. If you want some harder questions, they tend to be harder than average. There are some kind of third-party books that I'm loath to really recommend any, for a variety of reasons. I would say, don't worry too much about the best book. Most books out there are going to be fine for what they're worth, which is to do supplemental problems and supplemental learning. The core of your studying should be real ACTs, real tests, real sections, real questions. That should be the core of any ACT or SAT studying. And then, you know, how else do you supplement that with books, or my courses, or whatever? You know, that's up to you, but it's not as big of a deal as it may seem. Okay, "What is the best online resource for studying ACT for free?" So I have one free course, which is ACT English. That's available for free. It's a complete course. You can use that. That should teach you everything you need for ACT English. My other courses are not free though, so those are paid. In terms of other ACT online resources, I mean, there's probably a bunch of random stuff out there. There's no Khan Academy unfortunately for the ACT yet. Maybe one day, but not yet. So I mean, CrackACT's got practice tests. I mean, that's probably the best free resource. Crackact.com, I think it is. Let's see. Yeah, crackact.com. That's probably the best resource for practice tests. Otherwise, you know, there's probably videos on YouTube. I would check to see what... Here's the thing, unless you have Google and Bill Gates giving you money to make courses and stuff, like Khan Academy is doing, or if you're like independently wealthy and want to give away a bunch of free stuff, it's really hard to find quality-free ACT prep material, because most of the time, people are going to charge for that on some level. So, but with using the free stuff you can find, like my free course, other free material on YouTube or elsewhere, borrowing books from the library, if you have access to that, could be a way to do it. Plus, using the tests on CrackACT, you should be able to put together a good prep program. Like, even though I like my courses and I think my courses are awesome, they're not essential. Like, I don't market anything that I offer as like, "If you don't have this, you're going to bomb the test", because that's just not true. You can put together a good study program with freely available stuff. You just got to be in the case of the ACT, a bit more creative, and to some extent with the SAT, a bit more creative in finding those sources. Okay, let's see. Okay, email question. A little broad, but actually, a good broad question, I think. So this is a good example of a broad question that's still kind of focused. "How can I identify my weaknesses in the reading section? How can I prove them once identified?" So there's a lot of aspects to this. The problem with reading, as you probably know, compared to math, or writing, or English, is there's not formulas or concepts that you can really learn in an atomized way. Whereas for math, you can learn formulas. For English, there are grammar rules. For reading and for science on the ACT, none of that thing exists. So that whole bit is out. There's no content that we can focus on. However, there are skills. There are things that are based on reading skills, and then there are aspects based on the particular test. So for reading skills, I'd say there are a few things that you can potentially identify. So one would be vocabulary. One would be understanding sentence structure, which is kind of related to grammar. A lot of times, if you don't understand how sentences are put together, that can affect the way you comprehend the passage. Identifying main ideas. Finding evidence in the passage, which is huge. So being able to pinpoint, "Here are the lines that give me the answer to this question", isn't really important. And I would say that for reading skills, that's probably the majority of it. When it comes to tests, so you didn't specify which test, whether it's reading or SAT, so I'm going to be a bit general. But then there's like test skills. So there's aspects of the ACT or SAT reading that are specific to those tests. So this would be things like question types, or the particular question types that you're consistently getting wrong, like vocab in context, inference, main idea, line reference, keyword, whatever, function. If you're getting those wrong consistently, that would be something to focus on in your review. Trap answers. If you are consistently falling into the same kinds of traps, recycled words, too extreme, half-right, all-wrong, opposite, whatever it might be, the different traps that I talk about in my courses, that would be something you'll want to pay attention to. Time management. So if you find yourself running out of time, or using your time poorly, that would be something you can determine in your testing, when you do practice test, practice sections, that would tell you what you would need to work on. So what you would do to identify your weaknesses is do timed sections, and then analyze the test. I've talked about this a lot. It's so important not just to grade the section or the test that you do and move on. You got to spend time. That document, that work that you did, and that score that you got, and the questions you got wrong, is pure gold in determining where your weaknesses are, where you can improve. You want to really dig into that. You probably should spend more time reviewing the test than you did taking it, and that's probably a pretty good rule of thumb. You really, especially at the beginning, when you're first learning what your mistakes are, you really want to dig into that test. And then identify, am I having problems with base reading skills, reading comprehension? Paraphrasing would be another one I could add here. Paraphrasing, summarizing, extracting particular evidence lines, finding where the answer is in the passage. Or am I having problems with this particular test, different question types, trap answers? And then you work on them from there. How do you improve them once identified? A lot more of its practice. Reading unfortunately responds best to tutoring, because it's helpful to have someone one-on-one kind of telling you what's up. Courses can help. Reading books is hard, in terms of like, oh, here's a prep book that I'm going to read to learn how to read. It's a little circular. So reading is a little bit harder to improve, but certainly, practice sections, review, working with friends or tutors, teachers, and then courses are really the recipe. Okay. Let's get to some chat questions here. "What is the difference between AP Chemistry and SAT Chemistry?" So let's nuke this. So we are looking at AP Chem versus SAT Chem. So I'm going to answer this in the context of someone preparing for SAT Chem. AP Chemistry is basically a miniature version of a first-year general chemistry course that you would take in college. It is quite broad in terms of the topics it covers. It goes in a certain, a good amount of detail, good amount of depth. There's a lot of math compared to, compared to like a regular chemistry course. So it's rigorous. It's hard. Typically, all this, AP Physics, maybe BC Calc, are kind of the top three most challenging courses you can probably take in high school. Maybe Anatomy and Physiology would be another one. There are probably others, and I probably offended people by saying this, but this is my opinion, that typically, these are some of the hardest courses. SAT Chemistry, I would say, is like a level below AP, but a level above regular chemistry. So if we were to put a, you know, do a tier list here, the hardest would be AP Chem, then you'd have SAT Chemistry, and then maybe like an Honors Chemistry would be right below SAT, and then regular kind of standard chemistry would be below that. So if you're preparing for SAT Chem, and you've done AP, or you're doing AP, like if you're studying for AP test right now, you're going to be in a really good position to do well in the SAT Chemistry, though you'll still want to prepare for it, because the test is particular about certain things. SAT Chemistry, for example, is more broad, not super deep, and there's really not much math on it, because you can't use a calculator. So you're limited in what you can do for math. If you're in Honors Chemistry, you're probably going to need to study up a little bit to get to the level of SAT Chemistry, probably not too much. If you're in regular chemistry, I would only take SAT Chem if you really like and/or are really good at chemistry, and you're willing to study and prep, because you're probably going to need to study up a bit more to get to the level of SAT. I would say, like, if you were to put the distance between these, representing how close they are, these are much more bunched together than AP. Like, AP is like way above this set. So SAT Chemistry is probably closer to these than it is to AP. It's a good general rule. Okay, chat questions. Actually, we'll go to... So this individual sent me their scores for the breakdown. So what I'm going to talk about then, since it's hard to talk about all of these scores, let me give you advice on what to do for science. So someone sent me a 24-science score. So let me give you the top three, we'll say, things you can do to improve your science score at this level, to go from, let's say, science being a 24, to science being, I don't know, high 20s. What are the top three things you can do? So this is going to be a broken record, but timed sections, so critical, because you have to get used to the time management. That's probably one of the major issues holding down the score, is being as efficient as you can. So do timed sections, make sure there are real sections from real tests, and then, of course, as we just said, review, 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 review. When it comes to your review, and when you're learning, what you want to focus most of all at this point are your six-question passages. These are what are called your data representation passages. The reason why you want to focus on these is, there's probably a lot of gettable points in these passages, excuse me, that you're missing, for whatever reason. These passages, the six questions, typically are easier than the others. So if you're missing points here, if you're having to skip or guess on them, because of your time management, this is a huge area. You want to be as close to perfect, maybe a minus one in these six-question passages as you can, because they are gimme points in many cases. What would be the, what would be a third thing? There's a lot of things, but scientific, so learn scientific method. So you want to understand things like, what are controls? What are variables? What are hypotheses? Things like that. I have a video on this, actually, on my channel. It's part of the ACT Science Course, but it's available for free. Just Google "Reason Prep Scientific Method", you'll find it. You want to make sure you're solid on this. Independent and dependent variable would be another example. So you should know, what is a control? What is a variable? What is an independent variable? What is a dependent variable? What is a hypothesis? And how do these things interact? If you don't know that, if you're shaky on that, that's something you want to really study and study up on. Okay, let's see what else we got here. Chat questions. "Could you recommend good resources for targeted practice for difficult math problems and grammar?" Could you, I'll put types in chat, which test? And I'll come back. Next question, "How to take effective notes if you get a problem wrong?" Also, do you, I guess, that means recommend taking notes on the side when taking the reading exam? Okay, how to take notes? I would recommend, whatever way you like to take notes, would be the first place to start. So that would either be like a notebook, separate notebook, or, you know, Word document on your computer, or laptop, or Evernote, or OneNote, or SimpleNote, whatever note-taking apps you might use. You probably have your own preferences. Probably something handwritten would be the best, because then you don't have to deal with like, typing math into notebooks. So probably I would use a handwritten notebook, maybe some combination of that with some sort of computer document. But one of the things you want to keep track of would be topic lists. Am I getting the same thing wrong again and again? Strategies, things that might work or don't work. So I would take notes, you can take notes in the test next to the problem as you review, but then I would transfer those notes into another central resource, like a written notebook, a Moleskine notebook, or a sketchbook, whatever, whatever you like to use. It doesn't really matter, as long as you're recording it and you're processing it some way, that's what matters. Follow-up question. When you're taking reading, when you're doing a reading section, so SAT or ACT, doesn't matter. The question is, should you take notes as you're taking the test? And generally, no. I don't recommend it. Some other strategies recommend you annotate the passages, you read the paragraphs, and you summarize them. For reasons I won't go into, I think that's a waste of time. I don't think it actually helps that much. I think it just burns time. One reason being, let's say there's a paragraph that you read and annotate, and then there's no questions about that paragraph. What was the point? You just spent two minutes annotating something that they're not going to ask about. That's a waste, among other reasons. So generally, no, I don't recommend it. I don't think it's necessary. In the end, if you do it and it works for you, that's fine. I'm just saying, if you're not In the end, if you do it and it works for you, that's fine. I'm just saying if you're not doing it now, there's no reason to start later. You're not missing out on anything. Let's get to an email question here. So it's a Khan Academy question. And I believe this one also comes from a practice SAT. So if you want to not watch this, you might want to not watch this, uh, because, oh wow, this is messed up. How can I? Okay. Let's try this. Uh, since this is not, maybe not a question you've done, this is from one of the most recent tests, test eight that I think they've released or are going to release. So you may not want to watch this, just in case you do the test later. So a photocopy machine is initially loaded with 5,000 sheets of paper. The machine starts a large job and copies at a constant rate. After 20 minutes, it has used 30% of the paper, which the following equations models the number of sheets of paper remaining in the machine and minutes after the machine started printing. So the first key word to see here is it's copying at a constant rate. And when you see constant rate, that means it's a linear equation. It's not exponential. So right away, C and D are gone. Those are exponentials. So we know it's down to A or B and now we can, um, you know, guess if we wanted to. But how would we get the answer more directly? I would say, okay, after 20 minutes, 30% of the paper has been used. So let's see how much that would be. So 5,000 sheets times point three. That would be 1,500 sheets. Does that work? Let me just double check because I don't want to screw this up. So that sounds right, but let's be thorough here. Yeah, 1,500. So that means I would have 3,500 left. So what I would do is let's plug these numbers in. Let's plug in M is the number of minutes. Let's plug in 20. And let's see which of these gives me 3,500 and I'll see when I do that, when I plug 20 in for M, I'll get 3,500 equals that. So the answer would be B. So just like I do with many algebra problems, this is a number 29. This is in theory, one of the hardest ones in the section. But it's not hard at all. Just plug in your numbers, plug in numbers from the problem. I'm sure there's a way to get this algebraically, you can derive it straight up, but like I've never seen this question before. It's the first time I've done this, but knowing, doing this test a lot, it's just, okay, let me, when you're given functions and choices, test them out, see which one satisfies the conditions of the problem and that's what gets us choice B. Okay. Would you say SAT chemistry is heavy content based? Um, not as much as AP. They have a lot more of what I call factoid questions on the SAT chemistry test. It's just like weird stuff that they like you to know. For example, acid rain is composed of sulfur oxides. Weird stuff like that, that you should know. So they look little facts. But it's more content than like a regular, regular chemistry class, certainly less than an AP. Some mathy type questions that are simple concepts, but yeah, it's more, I would say it's not really, what'd you, how'd you phrase it? Content based. Yeah, I just think it's more conceptual than anything else. Certainly there's facts and things to know, but understanding concepts of, you know, how moles work and gas laws and things like that is really a lot of what they're testing. What is the difference between ACT and SAT in English? Okay, so what is the difference between ACT and SAT in English? Really nothing. ACT I think is harder when it comes to ACT English versus SAT rating. It's harder and um, there's just more questions and more time. Whereas the SAT English is much more limited, but they test a lot of the same things, a lot of the same rules. They both have rhetorical skills questions. So if you're studying for both tests, which typically I don't recommend, typically I recommend you pick one of the SAT or the ACT. But if you are studying for, for both, studying for one is the same as the other. They're really similar. So, uh, for example, if you've used my SAT writing course and you wanted to check out my ACT English course for whatever reason, it wouldn't hurt you. I don't think it's the best use of your time, but there's a lot of overlap. What is the additional topics in ACT math? Uh, I thought you was gonna say SAT, um. Let me see if they see if I Google this and see if I come up with anything about this. Yeah, I don't see that. Maybe you meant SAT math. If you could follow up, if you wanted to let me know what you meant by additional topics, maybe I could help. Uh, question about again SAT chemistry, you're taking chemistry honors and you're taking the subject test for chemistry. How much would they be similar? Depends on the honors class. Most likely pretty similar. You'll probably cover a lot, if not all of what's on the test to some degree. You'll still need to prep because there are some differences. You want to get used to the peculiarities of the SAT chemistry test. But you should be in a pretty good starting point. Doesn't mean you can't prep, but you shouldn't be in a good starting point. Okay, this was a follow-up about, uh, SAT or ACT. Okay. So the question was, uh, targeted practice for difficult SAT math problems and grammar problems. So if you are looking for hard SAT math problems, Khan Academy is a good place to start. Real tests, of course, good place to start. Um, those are the top two sources. There are books out there, I won't name names that purport to give you really hard problems as a way to prep for the SAT. I generally don't recommend them because they often make their problems hard in ways that they're not going to be hard on the real test. So for example, they'll make the math ugly, they'll make the numbers ugly, they'll make the question kind of conceptually confusing. Um, that's not, or they'll test something that's not even on the SAT. So I don't generally recommend books that purport to give you really hard questions. You want to stick as close to the source material as possible. So that would be Khan Academy and SAT. Eventually I'm planning, uh, to uh, make some more worksheets for both SAT and ACT. That's a long time coming. They're really labor intensive and I've got a lot of other things that I'm working on, including crash courses for the SAT and ACT. So that's quite on the back burner, but that would be at least the place to start, unfortunately. Probably not the answer you're looking for. You probably knew about Khan Academy, but because the SAT is still so new, this is the problem. It's still such a new test. It's only a few years old. We're super limited in our materials. So I've got a question again, Khan Academy. Again, this is test eight. This is an emailed question. You might want to ignore this if, um, you haven't done this test because this is from a real test. Well, those number third, oh, multiple choice. Okay. Okay. So the question was, first question was, what is this question type? So this question type is functions, functions, function values, function graphs and tables. So the graph of function F and a table of values for G are shown, the maximum value of F is K. What is the value of G of K? So this is pretty straightforward. The maximum value of F is K. So on this graph, where does this graph reaches maximum? It reaches a maximum here. That function has a value of three, so we know K is three. And now I want to evaluate, uh, G at three, which is plugging in basically three is X. And I get an answer of six, which is choice B, which is the answer. So yeah, this is functions, tables, graphs, outputs, inputs. I cover this a lot in my math course. Um, pretty standard question. It's a number 30, but notice I did it in about, I've never seen this question before. Did it in about 15 seconds, just based on knowing the concepts, knowing the strategy. So yeah, not much to say about that beyond what I've already said. All right. So let's go to chat questions again. Can I make the picture bigger? Um, yeah, let me just see, I'm having problems with this, uh, format. It's just not great. Let's do this. Let's see if this will work. Okay, that's the, that's the picture. So you should be able to see it a little bit better, uh, what it looks like. So just to do that again, here's the val, here's the maximum of the function. It's at Y equals three. So now I want to know what is the value of G evaluated at that maximum? So G of three. That's when I'm plugging in X is three. So that gets me six, which was B. Okay. How can I get a 36 on ACT science? Obviously a lot to say about it. Let me give you the, the number one thing. Besides time management, you gotta be able to answer every single question. It is know where the test is hard and where it isn't. So on those six question passages and on some of the questions in the seven question passages, the research summaries, the answers are going to be straightforward and simple and you don't want to overcomplicate it. On other questions, typically questions at the end of passages and questions that are wordier, questions based on experimental design and reasoning. Those and outside knowledge to some extent, those are going to be the challenge questions and those are going to be the ones you're really going to have to puzzle over and work on. And those are often the time consuming ones, the ones you'll leave until the end. So know the test really well, know when you're overthinking it and when you need to think a little bit harder. And often a signal of that is, as I said, questions at the end of passage sets are typically harder. Questions that have more words are typically harder. Questions that are based on the passage as a whole are typically harder. So those are the ones where in your practice and when you're doing the test, you really want to spend some extra attention. Advice for US history SAT two. So I'm not really much of an expert in US history or the SATs you test for that. From what I've seen of it though, it's pure content. You just got to know your stuff and there's no shortcut for that. Reading books and reading your notes again and again is not going to do it. The best thing you can do for any kind of learning that applies to the SAT test, the ACT, the subject tests, uh, if you're learning facts and concepts is flashcards. You have to force yourself to produce the knowledge and then see if it matches the actual information. Simply reading, 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 reading is not going to do anything. You have to quiz yourself, flashcards, self-quizzing, whatever you might do to learn that and then you'll get it down like that. And then that's, that's really it for the, for the subject test and history, I would think. It's just just concepts. It's just facts. How is SAT physics? Typically, I'm again, I'm not a huge expert on it. From what I understand, it's typically the hardest subject test. Or one of the hardest, maybe up there with literature and maybe some other ones. But yeah, physics one is hard. If you look at the curve, it's ridiculous. Like let me see, do I have a curve for physics? Let's see, maybe I do. It's kind of funny, actually. I don't know if I have one, maybe I don't. Oh, wait. No, it's not right. Um, wait, this is it. Yeah. So here is from one of their official tests in the book. Just have a copy of it. Oh no, they don't have it. Darn it. Fact of the matter is when you, when you score it, the curve is insane. Like you can get a ton of questions wrong and still get an 800. So it's a pretty hard test. It's pretty broad. Covers a lot of topics. So definitely one I would really only recommend for AP or even strong honors classes. I heard the ACT math got a lot wordier this year. Do you have any advice on improved math skills? I've been practicing a lot with old tests. So pretty broad question. The only part I think I can really address is the wordiness aspect of things. They always, there's always these claims and a lot of those claims are anecdotal, like, oh, the tests are wordier or they're not, it seemed harder, it didn't seem harder. So let's just take for granted that it is true that they are getting wordier, probably in an effort to mimic the SAT, which is much more wordy in its math problems typically. The main piece of advice I would give you is almost none of those words actually matter. I mean, certainly certain parts do, certain numbers, definitions. But most of that stuff is typically nonsense and, and, or, or it's not as important. And the challenge is getting better at those wordy math problems is learning what's important and what's not. And that comes from experience. So you've already said you're doing practice tests and practice sections. That's great. So it comes from experience, it comes from review and learning from experience what's important and what's not. So these are the things I have to focus on. This is the data I'm going to take and turn into math. Most of the time, even on those wordy ACT math problems, they're going to be pretty straightforward to solve when you actually put pen to paper and you start doing the work. So it's going to be not being intimidated, analyzing them, finding what's important and what's not. Uh, if you want to provide examples, if you have an example question that we can look at, so you can see how we decode it, that's probably the best way for me to, uh, be able to answer it because in the end it comes down to specific questions. Um, but that's the best I can say when it comes to general tips. So follow-up actually about AP US history, which builds on what I just said about SAT history. The question is, I'm reviewing by reading outlines for every chapter. Is that enough? So as I said, just reading is not going to be good enough. I won't go into the details why it's actually really interesting kind of neuroscience, the cognitive science of learning, why that's the case. But just reading and rereading is useless. You won't learn anything, uh, or at least will be very inefficient. So as I said, what you want to do is flashcards, self-quizzing, forcing yourself to produce the knowledge and then seeing if what you produced is correct. So it could be, you know, having, this thing keeps turning, this is annoying, probably have to change this next time, uh, having, uh, flashcards with questions on it like, um, what were the, I'm digging this up, but like what were the five major causes of the Revolutionary War or something? What was the Stamp Act? What was this? What was that? And then forcing yourself to produce that knowledge, that is what's going to guarantee you that you're going to do well. That's what I did when I was doing APs when I went to college. That's what I learned eventually, especially was produce those flashcards, practice with those flashcards, force yourself to check yourself, test yourself. That is what's going to absolutely make you a rock star. Reading and rereading, not very useful. Do I recommend taking both the SAT and ACT? Uh, not typically. Hi Peyton, uh, not typically. Uh, I think it's best to pick one versus the other. You and I can talk more about this individually, but, uh, it's best to pick one or the other rather than, um, trying to do both because the tests are so different that you'll be splitting yourself. So the best way I have an article about this for anyone else who's interested, how to pick SAT versus ACT. It's pretty simple. You take one, you take the other, you compare the scores. If there's a major difference, you go with the one you're better at. If there's not a major difference, you pick the one that you like more. That's about it. But I do recommend picking one or the other. There's so much in AP world history. How would I study for that? Same thing. Flashcards, forced review, self-quizzing. That's the secret. That honestly, that it's, it's painful and it's hard work, but that's why it works. And that's really the secret for, for, for classes where you have to memorize a bunch of stuff. So history, some of the sciences like biology or anatomy and physiology. Any of those things where you have to produce content, knowledge, even on like math, when you want to learn formulas or sciences like chemistry or physics, where you want to learn terms or formulas or concepts. That's the secret. That's really the secret. It's flashcards, self-quizzing, forcing yourself to produce that knowledge. That's what does it. Even something like world history where there's a ton. In fact, it's probably more important there. How can I do better on purpose and main idea questions in the SAT reading? So again, it depends on the specific examples, like the specific questions, the specific passages. The main thing I would say. So let me go here. So the main piece of advice I would give you about main idea and purpose questions is make sure two things. Your answer is essential and comprehensive. So what do I mean by this? If you're trying to get the main idea of a passage or of a paragraph or the purpose of a paragraph or a passage, whatever it is, you want to make sure not to get hung up on a little detail. Like if there's a little detail in the passage that they make the answer, that's not the main idea or the primary purpose. That's just a detail. So you want to get the thing that's most of all, that's essentially the main idea, right? Or the primary purpose. Not just something that's mentioned elsewhere. Similarly, it's got to be comprehensive. So like, let's say you see this a lot on the SAT and sometimes on the ACT. So let's say we've got a passage. Do it like this. Let's say you have a passage. Whoops. No, come back. Okay. So let's say you've got a passage and it's like this and then this, those are the lines of your passage. And then let's say you've got a question like, what's the structure of the passage or the main idea? And let's say one of your choices is like this happens and then this happens and then this happens. Let's say what, that's what it was. Typically what you're going to see is that each of these parts of the answer choice are going to sequentially map onto each chunk of the passage like that. So I've color coded it. This is what I mean by comprehensive. Typically your main idea choices are going to cover the most parts of the passage as they can. That's what it means to be main idea and it hits the main central point. So those are the general thoughts I can give about main idea questions. It's a 740 in SAT world. Is a seven forty in SAT world history good? Sounds good. Generally. Anything over seven hundred is good. Seven fifty plus is generally, depends on the test, but it's generally better. Um, so seven forty is, is pretty solid. What I would do, let's see. So what I would do is. If you're curious about what. Tests are good or bad, let me switch over to desktop for a sec. Okay. So what you should do, if you're curious whether your subject test is good or bad, you can also do this with the SAT or ACT. Cause good or bad is a relative term, right? It's good if it's better than other students' scores, basically. Google SAT subject test percentiles and then click. Like the first link. And this is for two thousand fifteen. Um, actually this, yeah, this is good. Uh, this will give you a good idea. So this question was about, let's see. It was about. It was about. World history. So the question was, is a seven forty good? Well, here's a seven forty. And that would be in the eighty fourth percentile, which means it's better than eighty four percent of the other students who took it, which is really good, especially for a self-selected test like this. Uh, notice the drop off. Once you get to about seven hundred, uh, that's a seventy third percentile, which is still good. But you know, a seven hundred on the regular SAT would be very, very good. Uh, so obviously it's self-selected. As you can see, ninety sixth percentile is an eight hundred, which means about four percent of students get an eight hundred on this, gives you an idea of the competitiveness. But so a seven forty is pretty good. I would be, I don't think you have to retake that if that was going to be the, the thrust of your question. Seven forty for world is good. What is your SAT writing course offer? Oh, let me switch back to, to me. What is your SAT writing course offer? Comprehensive. So it covers everything. So we go through all the grammar rules. We go through the rhetorical skills, questions, the print, the four principles to answer them. We go through examples and I work through seven. Complete SAT tests, question by question, passage by passage. Uh, it is everything you need for the SAT writing test and it is a hundred percent free. So if you're not enrolled in it already, I recommend enrolling in it, starting on it. You work through that diligently, you do all the practice tests, you review the questions, you watch the videos. There's not much more you can do because like I said, I've made it to be as comprehensive as possible. Okay, SAT essay. In, uh, by the way, I'm probably going to end close to eight o'clock. So that's in about seven minutes or so. So if you want to have any last minute questions, I recommend. You put them in chat or you email me. Again, this whole thing will be available later. So on YouTube in an edited form. So you can also watch it there. Uh, SAT essay. In one of your videos, you recommended that completing all four pages will either get enough marks. How can one improve a six, six, six to a seven, seven, seven? So. The point I made in the SAT essay course, it also applies to the ACT essay, is the more you write, the higher the score. That's simply how it works. Now you can't just write gibberish and fill the pages with garbage because it's still got to be good. But as a general rule of thumb, the more you write, the higher the score. So on the SAT, if you're getting to about two pages. It's generally speaking, going to be hard for you to break out of. S, a ceiling of a six, a six, a six and a six, or a five and a five and a five. It's just going to be hard to do that. Once you can get to about two and a half to three pages, especially on the SAT. That's when you're in a really good position to be at least six, a six and a six on the three scores. In terms of how to get to a seven, a seven and a seven, you know, it depends on. Which part you're talking about, um. Most of the time, when it comes to the reading and the analysis scores for the SAT essay, most of the problems students have, it's just not enough detail. They have, just haven't written enough. So. Provide more detail, be more specific, elaborate on your ideas. If you feel like you're going to, if you, if you say something and then you're going to move on, take a second and say, wait a minute, can I elaborate on this? Can I? Provide more detail. Can I be more specific? Can I give another example? Can I? Drive harder into my analysis, whatever it might be. That's the main thing I would say. If you're getting a six, a six and a six on the reading, writing. Reading analysis and writing scores on the SAT essay, you're doing good things. So do more of them. That's really going to be the key. Do more of what you're doing, push harder. Uh, you don't have to get to four pages. Um, you're given four pages, I believe total to write on, but you don't have to fill up all four. Uh, up to three would be a good target and the more you can push, the better. Uh, but that will get you to at least a six, a six and a six. And then from there, it's just. More specificity, more details, elaborating, uh, being more. Uh, particular and specific with your analysis, which is usually where the scores lag. Most students have no problems. Or less problem getting to like a seven plus in the reading and maybe a seven plus in the writing. The analysis score usually lags and I talk a lot about that in the SAT essay course. So again, my SAT essay course is also free, completely free. Part of it's on YouTube, most of it's on my website, reasonprep.com. So you can take that full course and it's complete. So everything you need there is, uh. Everything you need. Uh, question about my SAT reading course. So let me. Show you that. So you just go to my website, go around a little bit, you'll find my reading course. So let me just show that. So the reading course is not free. It is, there's some videos that are free. You can get a sample of what it looks like. Um, but, uh, if you scroll down, if you go to the reading course thing, you scroll down. And you see the class curriculum, you'll see exactly what's in the course. So we cover core videos, we cover the different question types. What the test is structured like, the core strategy for tackling the test, how to tackle dual passages, uh, some important facts and skills. We work through seven full SATs. So here's practice SAT one, here's two, here's three, four, five, six and seven. Um, and then I also have other strategy videos, uh, core reading tactics, how to tackle, uh, particular strategies and skills you need. Uh, tactics for tackling certain question types like keyword questions, graph and figure, how to manage your time. So this is again, a comprehensive course. This, in my opinion, is everything you would need to do really well on the reading test. Now the reading is always the hardest to improve. So, um, you know, it's going to require a lot of practice and effort. But certainly a lot of the lessons that I teach in that course are going to be, uh, really helpful for that kind of thing. All right. Uh, which score can you increase the quickest? Typically English for the ACT and writing for the SAT is typically the ones that improve the most quickly. Uh, for the next quickest improvement for the SAT would be math. There's quite a gap between the writing and the math in that regard though. And then for the ACT, probably the math. Yeah. Yeah, I'll say that. It's, it's pretty close though. And then the reading for the SAT is definitely the hardest to improve on. Um, for a lot of reasons, some of which I've mentioned, it's more of a skill than content knowledge. For ACT, it's probably a tie then between reading and science, because again, for the same reason. Um, so if you're looking for quick gains, maximize your score in ACT English and SAT writing. Very doable. Almost everybody, if they put in the time and effort. Um, practicing, using my courses for, which are free for SAT writing and ACT English. Put in the time, you should be able to get a thirty plus on ACT and a six fifty, maybe seven hundred plus, thirty five plus, uh, on SAT writing. I think that's a pretty reasonable expectation if you put in the time and effort. Okay, uh, let's do one more question and. Then I'm going to wrap up. Actually no, we're going to leave it there because I want to do a couple more things and then, uh, we're going to wrap up. So, uh, a few notes, I'm going to have another live stream. Let me see, when did I schedule it in my? Schedule here. So I'm going to have another live stream on. Sunday, two o'clock Eastern time. So this could be Sunday. Two o'clock Eastern daylight time. Uh, on YouTube, same place, same time. Uh, if you're. Uh, already on my mailing list, you'll get an email about it. If you're in my Facebook group, you'll get a message about it or you'll, you'll post about it. Uh, if you follow my YouTube channel, you'll see the thing pop up in your sub box. So plenty of ways to know about when it's going to happen. So if you can make that, again, send me your questions ahead of time, uh, or you can ask them in chat. Uh, I'm planning on hopefully having two sessions per week. That's the goal for now. Um, still learning and experimenting, seeing what works, seeing what people like. So any feedback or requests or anything will help me. Uh, but probably about two per week and we're vary the days and vary the times to try to get people to go. And, um. What was I gonna say? Uh-oh, what else am I trying to thought? Okay. So next stream will be then the recording for this will be up on YouTube on, um. Probably tomorrow condensed and, uh, there's one other question I'll ask about enrolling. So people who enroll in my courses, SAT or ACT. You can ask me questions in the courses. So there's in, under each video, you can leave a comment. I respond to every single comment personally. It's just me. I don't have other people working for me. Everything I do is me. Uh, so if you enroll in my courses or I also do online tutoring as well, uh, you get to interact directly with me. I do that also in the free courses as well, but in the other courses, I of course interact with you one-on-one too, on those topics. I also answer emails from students who are in the, the paid courses as well. Uh, so there's plenty of interaction with me in those courses. Um, yeah, so next live stream is Sunday, two o'clock Eastern time. Send your questions. I hope to see you then. Like I said, I'm going to have two per week. And, uh, we'll see where it goes and probably maybe in the summer I might have more. Again, we have to see where things go. Maybe I'll do three per week or four per week. I don't know. We'll see. Uh, I might also, maybe if you're interested in this, float the idea, I might have a more of a private groups. For students who enroll my courses, for example, we'll see. Um, so any requests, questions, let me know. Uh, thanks so much for coming out tonight and I will, or today, depending on when the time is, and I will see you all in the next stream. Bye-bye.